Good evening, and welcome to our regular council meeting plus our public hearing for this budget year. And I'm going to call you to order, and I'm going to ask Councilman Connolly to give us the invocation.
I do have a valuable thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight to serve the people of Allendale County. We ask you to be with us and lead us in the right direction to make the lives of those in Allendale County better. The same as we pray in Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen. Okay. We're going to declare a corps which we have, and we will go into a public hearing for our budget, and going to ask our acting administrator, Mr. Killian, to read just the title of that motion, please, sir.
Yes, sir, this is.
Just top of that ordinance should be sufficient, Walter.
This is an ordinance establishing operating capital budgets in the county of Allendale, South Carolina, for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to provide for the levies taxes for Allendale County for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to establish fees and service charges for Allendale County for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to provide for expenditure tax revenues and other county funds to provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain fiscal and other matters to levy to county government and other non expenses.
Okay. Very good. And we will add that, and let us take a look at section one, and just give us the numbers, please, sir.
Okay. Section one is the major appropriations for each of your individual funds. What this ordinance proposes is a fund appropriation of $12,988,044 appropriation for fire services of $1,057,388, for 801, $653,000,003, for airport, $366,483, for water district, $468,795, and the officer, $18,515,150. As Chairman, I would like to point out that each of the funds in your budget are balanced.
Okay. Right? This is a public hearing on our budget, and we're here to take any comments you may have. Like to thank Mrs. Major, she was with us the whole time, and I know she didn't have any questions. I think this is a very good budget, and thanks to Mr. Killian, he crunched the numbers and did some research, and I didn't realize we were spending so much money. And secondly, I treasure her, she certainly was a keeper of the money, and her record keeping has been very good. Now we just got to get through the ordinance, and hopefully, Clay, maybe by the end of the month, hopefully.
I know it's getting closer because he's sent out the required legal letters to all of our councils and people that, all of our legal counsel to see if there are anything pending that may affect the financial situation in the county. I don't know if we'll get anything back that we don't already know about. And he was asked a couple of questions from minutes and some things like that, so he just appears to be getting closer.
Very good. We're going to give you at least five more minutes. If not, we're going to conclude it. Counsel, any comments from counsel?
Is there a copy of the budget made available to the public?
Yeah. And you can always come by the administration office, and we want to charge you, we'll give that to you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to add too, I know we don't do a lot of things, but I'd like to see us add this budget to the website. I think it's pretty common practice. I think it just provides more transparency.
It does. And we're going to ask Clay and Judy to get together and make sure we get that in our system and on the internet. We're going to bring to close the public hearing for our 25, 26 pages. Any comments from counsel? We declare the public hearing over. We move now into our regular council meeting for September 18, 2025. As indicated, we do have a corps, and we're down to item number four, approval of the minutes. And we have four different items to approve: a budget workshop of August 19th, a budget workshop of August 25th, a special call council meeting of August 25th, and a regular council meeting of August 21st. What's the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the four items under the minutes.
Second. Moving properly second, any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses, aye, say aye. Approval of the agenda. Now, I was told we may have a, we may have some changes in the agenda. Are we okay? Okay, aye, aye. There was some indication, but I noticed it was on there, so we got it on there. Thank you so much. Again.
I move with approval.
Okay. Moving properly second, if we approve the agenda, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses, aye, say aye. Again, welcome, and we're down to public comments. Mr. Goode?
Good, good. Just a couple of things that, number one, I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council. And with that being said, on our annual fun day at the Council of Paint in the park, it was very successful. I do want to give a shout out to Bill Terry and his crew for what they did, and even after we got through, he came out and opened up their facility so we could get rid of our trash. So we appreciate that, and all the kind of folks that showed up. Thank you so much. But on the 911 system, because the park is labeled at 610 Thomas A. Wood Drive, and when you put it into the system, it doesn't come up. So we have a problem, you know, if people find their way there. So our thing is, it's been talked about maybe in the previous meeting that I was at, but it's something that I think I need to look into, because when you put it into your GPS, it doesn't register. And also handicap accessibility as far as the park, I think it needs to be improved, maybe get with Public Works or whoever that's in charge of that type stuff, because it was kind of challenging getting some of our handicap folks to those shelters, you know. So with that being said, we hope we can, you know, talk Public Works or Department of Recreation, come up with some type of plan to make it more accessible, not only events like that, but just your everyday event that, you know, folks with disability want to use the park. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Goode, I spoke to Jody at 911 Office about the address at the Martin Park, and she does have the correct address, and she said that she was going to put it into the system or speak to whomever she had to about making that correction, but she did see what the mistake was for the address.
Okay, I mean, I had checked it since a couple of weeks ago prior to the, yeah.
Well, when it was brought to my attention, I did call her, Jody, and she checked into it, and what you correct, you know, it was wrong what was in the system, and she's supposed to correct it.
Okay.
But if it's not correct, you know, I'll reach out to her again.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Goode. Next, we have Mrs. Ann Rice.
I have a variety of things tonight. First of all, I want to report, one of the things that Keep Out the Kind of Beautiful wanted to do was to try to get the neighborhood association involved in it, Keep Out the Kind of Beautiful, get them more involved, you know, but they've been kind of defunct since COVID. So Lottie and I pulled together a reorganization meeting that was held last Saturday, and we had great participation from all the neighborhoods. And so we're going to have another meeting on October 11, at 10 o'clock at Simpson. And anybody that's interested in having a neighborhood association in their area or joining one should come to that meeting. So that's the first thing. The second thing with this, I reported last month, we have a cleanup for the county, and I gave you flowers last month, I think, Friday and Saturday, October 3rd and 4th, and so I hope anybody that doesn't have flowers, I'd be glad to give you some. And then on October 24, we're going to have a countywide picking up of plants and furniture for people. So there's number one, you can call if you have something heavy that you can't get rid of, the salt baseball team is helping to gather those up and take them, either to our recycling center or the recycling center on 278. So that's, so if anybody in there needs one of those, I've got it here. The third thing is historical markers.
The what?
Historical markers. You know, we had got one clip for Burton's Ferry this past year, and we've just submitted a grant with the South Carolina 250 to fund markers for Matthew's Bluff, the Augusta to Savannah Road, and Colonel Ben Thompson, who was a revolutionary world veteran, and all those would be on Highway 3 because they're all right around Broton. We're working with Barnwell to do one for Betsis Ford, which is up on the edge of the Savannah River site, and for the barrel side of Captain Joseph Vance, who built the fort and was commander, and he's buried on Creek Plantation. And we're working on that submission to the South Carolina 250. And then we're also working with our Chroma to get one for the Topper site. So those are, you know, it's, I think it's really great to put the information about these historical markers.
Sure.
We're also will be working, we're also working with your church to get one of the edge, and we will be working for Simpson also. So we're trying to, you know, brag about what we've got. So that's, and Mike is working on the trail project, he's coming up with a price, and I think he did want to maybe touch base with counsel at some point about how that's going. So.
I have a question about the neighborhood associations. I wasn't there Saturday, I was out of town, but was that meeting about organizing the neighborhood associations in the different areas in the county?
It was reorganizing the ones that are in existence and organizing new ones, both.
Organizing what?
New ones.
New.
New ones. If an area didn't have one, then, you know, they try to get.
Because when it was initially organized, the neighborhood association, because I was a part of that when it was initially, and I nominated Lottie Lewis to be the chairman of all of the association, all of the.
She is, she is.
So I'm asking you, is that, is that the same, you want to have the same officers that when you have all of the associations under the same umbrella?
It will be left up to each organization who's going to lead theirs.
I'm not talking about.
But Lottie will, I'm just helping her, Lottie is leading the other one at this point.
No, I'm not talking about the individual associations in Allendale County. I'm talking about the main branch, because when we organize, we receive grant money to do certain things for the entire county. That's why I'm asking you, do you have?
We haven't gotten that far, no ma'am.
I was just asking, I was just asking.
Sorry, we have, no ma'am.
I'm not talking about, see, the other associations branched out from the main branch, okay? That's what I was asking.
So, no ma'am, we have, we kind of gave everybody in the groups to do their, you know, to kind of get their group together and kind of figure out what they wanted and come back on the 11, 10 o'clock at Simpson. So, because we're not dictating what each group can do, what we gave them was recommended things.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm talking about the main organizers, you know, you know, the main branch, you know, like the county council here have committees to work, you know, but we're the main branch, okay?
Okay.
So I'm asking, is there, will there be a main branch, or are you just talking about the individual associations, neighborhood associations?
At this time, we're just getting the individuals organized. If the county wants us to do something differently, then they need to let us know.
Well, I just stood the county in there, I didn't, I didn't want, I didn't mean to put.
What we talked about Saturday was that we would like to, this is what other people said, they would like to be the eyes and ears of the council so they could report to them with their needs or things that aren't being done, you know, if their needs in a neighborhood, to let them know, let the town know, or county know. They did talk about that at the meeting.
Well, one of the, and the reason I'm asking is because one of the main things that we were concerned about when we organized the neighborhood association was trying to do something with these houses in the county, but that was not left up to the individual neighborhood associations. You have one branch that would receive that branch money, not main branch money, grant money for that purpose, and we did receive money for it. We did receive money for it. That's why I'm asking, are you going to have, it's going to be, will it be like that, or are you just going to be focused on the individual neighborhood association?
If, if one, if organizations decide to get their own nonprofit status, then that could happen, but as, the ones that don't have nonprofit status can't do that because they can't handle the money. It would have to go through the town or the county.
Well, yeah, well, okay then.
Unless it's a free donation from somebody, not, not a, not an entity, most, most people require a nonprofit, our government agency. And, you know, if they don't have a nonprofit status, if they want to get it, then they can work on that. But as far as the dilapidated houses and things in town, I have been very vocal to the town about they need to do something about that, as others have, and, but they haven't had their comprehensive plan redone, and it's over 10 years old.
Well, actually, when it was organized, when it was initially organized, it was organized under Allendale Live, and that's, the money came through Allendale Live for that purpose. You know, it did not come through the individual neighborhood.
Okay, okay. And I guess I should still have to say, except, at this point, we were just trying to find out if anything's getting done.
I'm just asking a question.
So, no ma'am, we'd love to have you come to the next meeting and talk to us about it.
I'll see.
Thank you. Anything else?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Rice. Next, next we have Ms. Linda Green.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was listening to Ms. Rice, and I piggyback off something she said while I grabbed onto a connection. You know, the fire station we're about to get in St. Mark, congratulations to everything you all did in Mark, but next year this time, we're going to be celebrating too, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Great.
The fire station is right there on Mr. McIntosh's, you know, they pushed down his, his house to get that, and I'm thinking of a name. This man was St. Mark's professor, St. Mark's principal at that place, they pushed him all down. That would be awesome to put that name in there with that fire station. That's just, I just had to say that before I let it go. You get on it, okay, my councilperson?
You smack, you know.
Yeah, and to the council people, I thank you all for what you do, and I just love it when council members come to visit and look in their areas, not just when it's time to vote for you, but to come out and see what we are doing and what is needed. Makes sense?
Makes a lot of sense.
You should, you should come out and see, what do we need, ask us, what do we need? We voted you in, so come see us. All right, now, today, I'm here to talk about 966 Bass Loop. They came and they scraped the road. Thank you, Jesus. Since Hurricane Helene, they came out, and they did, they put a band-aid on it, and I'm thankful. There's so much work yet to be done to that road, and is there a backhoe? I know I've got three minutes. Is there a backhoe? Every time I talk to. There you are. How you doing today? Backhoe. He's in this green, that's not a backhoe. What the hell you gonna do? Fix whatever? I even called the engineer, I called everybody. I even called my Senator Hutto, I called them all. The road, it needs some more work, but we, I miss the money we got, but we don't have enough money to get a backhoe. A backhoe?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're working on that.
We working on a backhoe?
A new one.
A new back, and stop buying all of this antique stuff. You work it one week and it's down. Calm down.
Calm down, Ms. Green.
Mr. Killian is working on that. Our minister.
Who is it? Oh, this is, okay, I'll be there. Good. I introduced myself to him. All right, that's about it.
Okay. Well, we always look forward to you coming to let us know how we doing, and what we need to be doing.
I will, I will.
We thank you for that.
And I appreciate my council member. I got on, I called her, she got on it, and I thank you.
I'd like to see, call anybody in the state about that fire station.
And if I don't see something going on with that fire station soon, I'm going to go to the State House, I'm going to talk to Carl McIntosh himself, who's in there. He's old, like, I think, historical marches or something, so I'm going to, I'm just, I'm going to do what I have to do. I give you time, I do. I give you grace, but enough is enough. When I have enough, I'm going to do something about it. I'm like that persistent widow coming before the judge.
Well, if you let Carl know that we're looking at naming it after his dad, he might find some additional money.
That would be so awesome, that would make me feel so good. I'm telling you. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for listening.
Okay. Our visitors. Excuse me?
No.
I thought we, we've had the public comments, and. No visitors? Thank you. All right, we're down to council repose, and we will begin. We'll have our vice chair, Mr. John Chaney.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I only have one report, real chairman, this one, Officer Agent. The first one is that the South Carolina Department of Agent had purchased self-shelf stable meals for the officer agent that can be used during emergencies. The meals will be delivered later this month. Davidson Floyd came down and the architect for the leader walking trail has submitted two designs for our review, and that the seniors, they went to Estle for their senior day, and they had a very good time at the Boon Doon Center yesterday.
Oh, great.
That's all I have, real chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Chaney. Down to Mr. Connolly.
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I asked Chief Stanley to come tonight, I know he's further down the, the agenda to talk about the St. Mark Fire Station, so he'll give us a report later.
Okay.
Dealing with economic development, the closing on the property for Hampton Lumber is going to happen tomorrow, and I've been informed that Hampton Lumber is eager to begin construction, and it appears that they're going to have some, some site prep work going on pretty soon, so.
When is the groundbreaking anywhere?
It's going to be November the night.
I think we're still waiting on a set time for the, from the governor, but it's that time, but I think it is November time, but I'll keep that information to you.
Okay. Yeah, I was. Probably had it in my phone somewhere, but, yeah, sometime in November.
Early.
And I'll report it.
Say mid-November, hopefully, because.
Yes, definitely. It's first, I think they'll shoot for the first week or two.
It's definitely the first part of November.
First part.
Yep, so they'll have a groundbreaking either, I guess, on the site, like they did last time, I'm assuming. So anyway, that sounds like some good news from Hampton Lumber.
Same side, yeah?
Yes.
I missed that one.
Yep, yeah, good thing. And on the public works, we were made aware of some problems out at St. Mark Barton Convenience Center. And I don't know why it's taken so long for us to fix such a, a little problem, but, uh, me and Mr. Terry talked, and I think he got in touch with Clay, and, uh, very simple solution. Uh, part need to be repaired. Uh, thank you, Mr. Terry, for going out and getting that handled. I think he's got the part in hand, so I think he told me today and the next day or two, that compactor should be up and running. And that will leave the, uh, the trash over, uh, the trash problem out of that convenience site, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Mr. White.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Um, since our last council meeting, um, from September eighteenth until, uh, today's date, ten eighteen, I wanted to give a report on our permitting in the county. Um, I spoke to, uh, Mr. Wayne Willis, who provided me with a report. Uh, since September eighteenth, we had ten applications, residential and commercial. Uh, we have, um, three residential permits that have been, uh, applied for and passed, and, um, one commercial. We have three pending commercial permits and three pending residential. And there were two, um, applications that were declined. Um, all of the specifics of, of those applications will be given to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's what they've been requesting for quite a while, so that, you know, they all know specifically what's going on in the county. But I just wanted to provide these numbers.
Okay. My question, what would cause an application to be declined?
Uh, zone, zoning issues, which, if a zoning application or permit application is declined, then that would go before, that person would have the opportunity to appeal to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So which two, you think they gonna appeal?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
But I'm sure.
But they had that appeal.
They were told.
They didn't provide that application, right?
Okay.
That's my.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mrs. Janet.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, again. For several months now, we've been discussing the Fourteenth Street Park in Fairfax across from the school. Well, that park, uh, land has been purchased by someone, and they're requesting that we move our equipment off of the property. Um, if, um, parts, uh, PRT, PRD has to move the, uh, equipment, um, it's gonna cost, what, what it says is that if the county do not remove the, uh, equipment, the county will have to use twenty-five thousand dollars of its own money to place park equipment at another county-owned, um, uh, property. But if the property is not owned by the county or is another piece of property, then the county is gonna have to pay the twenty-five thousand dollars back to PR. I think this echoes.
So basically, what you're saying, if we move it to a county property, then there's no payback?
Well, it all depends, because if you move it to a county property, the, the equipment has to be removed by someone. If Public Works can remove the equipment, then that will be fine. But the last time Public Works was asked to remove the equipment from the C.B. Bayne School, they cut the legs off, off of the equipment, and it could not be used, had to trash it. But now, if you hire, according to Lori Jonah, if you hire, uh, church recreation, if you had to remove it, it will cost the county sixteen thousand dollars. So the county will need to get with Lori to find out the best, uh, solution, uh, for moving the equipment. And she's also recommending that, well, we have several parks. We have the, uh, Thomas Cohen Park, which is right next to the park where the water, uh, equipment is now.
Water.
And, the water park. Uh-huh. So she said you can move it there, they do have space there, or you can move it to, uh, the Morris Home Park. And you know that, like, in recent years, there's been a lot of evangelism, you know, at the Morris Home Park, so I don't know whether that would be a, a location. And then you have, um, James L. Paintney Park in Martin. But it would be left up to the county, which park you would want to move that equipment to. But whatever park you're gonna move it to, you gotta do it as soon as possible, because the owner of the land, um, wants it moved.
Does the committee has a recommendation?
Lori has a recommendation. She's recommending Thomas Cohen Park.
And does the committee agree with that?
Well, it had been brought before the committee.
Okay.
But the committee will meet, um, our meeting was canceled for, we couldn't be.
Okay. Is there any way you can get with Mr. Terry to take a look at those pieces of equipment? I don't think there's only, if I remember correctly, two, three pieces of equipment down at the Fairfax Park. And certainly, it didn't cost sixteen thousand to, to, uh, to place them there. And to pay sixteen thousand to remove them, doesn't seem like, uh, the number is adding up, so. Mr. Terry, would you get with the committee?
Uh, would.
And see what we can do? It looks like, and, and, and Walter, I know this thing was back and forth with Mr., uh, Mr., uh.
Walker.
Walker.
Whatever happened with him participating in that? The owner of the land?
Yeah, I think.
Who, who sold the land to the?
He has an obligation too, doesn't he?
He has an obligation. What is happening?
I don't know.
Do we have a lease? Huh? Do we have a lease from, from?
Yes.
Well, there was a, a joint use agreement with him to use for the park. He was the one who had gotten it there. And he actually sold it now, so we have to move the equipment. And at one point, we were negotiating with him to pay for part of the cost of removing the equipment.
Yeah. And I don't, for some of that, it got dropped, we didn't hear from him. And I know you was in communication with him. I think we need to get everybody at the table. If he's already sold it, then he's, there's a financial obligation that he's committed to in the removal process.
Right.
So, we need, before we start spending our own money, we gotta see exactly what it's gonna cost, and, you know, we can share in that cost.
But answer your question earlier, you've got to put it on county-owned property. Because we had looked into putting it on, in the town of Fairfax, leaving, trying to leave it in the town of Fairfax. And I think the town of Fairfax was looking at establishing a park on their property. But we couldn't do that. If you, if we were to move our equipment to the town's property, we'd have to pay the twenty-five, the grant money back to.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Did we ask Fairfax to donate a piece of property to the county? And that may be an easy fix.
I'm thinking that that was supposedly supposed to be done, because they were talking about putting a, a part, you know, where the tennis courts, where the UBSO is, and then there's some tennis courts, and then there's a park right beyond that. And, you know, the idea was to get the town to donate that part of their property to the county, so that the county could move the equipment there and establish the park and let the, the town run it, basically.
Can we, can we reach out to the town and see what we are there?
And I was thinking someone maybe has, but I'd be glad to, to see.
That certainly could resolve the issue in terms of the costs of moving it, so.
Okay.
Ms. Janet, go ahead.
Um, the, um, Lord Council, government, our executive committee, uh, met, uh, last week, and they received four applications requesting homeowners' rehabilitation, and for four counties, Aiken County, Banburg County, Allenelle County, and Calvin County. So Allenelle, all counties have been approved by the executive committee to receive, uh, up to sixty thousand dollars for that application. I don't, I don't know what house it is or what, in Allenelle County, but it has been approved by the executive committee, and it will go before, for board for approval. And once it's approved, um, it will, it will start, the rehabilitation will start in December too. Wayne, do you know what house it was or?
No. Uh, we were not given that information, but just the approval process, the money's there and it's been approved. We won't know, uh, if it's gonna be for one particular house, or would that sixty thousand, a couple of two maybe? It's all it has.
Okay. Also, in, um, recently, in one of our budget meetings, um, there was a conversation about the Office of Aging Building and Office of Aging Program, not the building. Um, and who really was in charge of that program. And so I received some documentation, um, concerning the Office of Aging, and also have the deed, uh, when it was established. The county in Al, of Allenelle, at the time requested, I don't know whether it was done under administrator, Mr. Billy Priester, or Mr. Yarborough, was administrators back during the nineties. And at that time, Jackie Jones was the, at the, uh, administrator of the Office of Aging. And of course, Lori was still the administrator of Parks and Recreation. But what the county did was requested Parks and Recreation to fund, um, provide, uh, seventy-two thousand dollars, so I'm, I'm not sure about the exact amount of money, to build that building to house the, uh, Office of Aging only. But the Parks and Recreation, a part, uh, refused to do it just for, um, did I say Parks and Recreation? But they asked for the money for the Office of Aging. And, uh, the state refused to give Allenelle County monies just for the Office of Aging. And they said they would not provide any money just to serve just part of the county. If, you know, they would provide the money to serve all the citizens of the county. So, um, I have, um, a letter from whoever the administrator, um, from Parks and Recreation, and, and it said that, um, it is, it is our opinion that if the two parties, the Commission on Aging and the Recreation Department can reach a point where both agencies receive reasonable benefits from this joint effort, that the citizens of Allenelle County could effectively be served. For instance, it is well-known, a known fact that the Recreation Department needs a jail. Um, if the Commission of Aging would agree to design a portion of the building for this purpose, we feel that part dollars would be well-spent. This is when they gave the county the money, because it had to include the Office of Aging and Parks and Recreation. So from that point, I don't know, you know, what happened from nineteen ninety-one up to the present time, because I wasn't on council. James Paintney was a council member then, and James Paintney from Fairfax was a council member. But James Paintney from Martin, he's still alive, but I think the other person is on here, are deceased. So maybe he could provide information, you know, about, you know, when it was organized, because you asked the question, Mr. Chairman, and we could go back to find out some information, how it was organized and when it was organized. Well, they moved into the new building in nineteen ninety-seven, but they started on the negotiations in nineteen ninety-one or somewhere along that time. Um, uh, Lori Jonah was housed in the administration office, and Jackie Jones was housed in a county building. So I have all of the information here, uh, Mr. Killian, I will provide, you know, copies for you. And council members, would you like to have copies of it as well? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Senator Terrence.
I'll give it to Ms. Count, Ms. Judy, uh, for her to give copies to you. But anyway, this is all of the information as to how it was organized, how it was formed, so you need to get some information. But the state did give the money to the county after they agreed that they will serve both the Office of Aging and Parks and Recreation. Now, I saw in this packet where the delegation at that time had some part of it, but I don't know what part, because it didn't specifically say, but maybe. And, uh, of course, all of them are deceased too. You know, that was, uh-huh.
Okay.
For the delegation, I don't really know. But it should be housed, so we're here in the courthouse to give you the information on that. But, um, this is the information for the Office of Aging, and this conversation came up in one of our meetings, and that's why I brought it to you. So I did some research on that. Um, Jackie Jones was the director at that time, when that, uh, the Office of Aging was organized at that time. And also, at the present time, I think at one of our budget meetings as well, um, Ms. Major brought up, uh, a point, uh, she brought up a concern that we should reach out to the municipalities about helping to support the Office of Aging because of the, uh, the cuts by the state and federal government. And it's been really cut a lot. And of course, the council have heard all of that information in our meetings. But, uh, Jackie Jones, who is, uh, the interim director, um, has a letter that she's sending out to the municipalities, to the churches, financial institutions, you know, anyone that could, uh, help sustain this program, keep us from falling, you know, flat on our face. But, you know, they're doing different things in many of the counties, in the six counties to help out with, uh, with this program because of the federal cuts. Now, Allenelle County is funded for Meals on Wheels up until the, the last day of September. Now, October the first, a new contract is supposed to come out, but we don't know if the federal government is gonna pass that budget by then. So we don't know we're gonna get a contract by October first. But now, just in case we do not get the contract by October first, according to Dr. Monarch, we are safe until April. We're safe until April. So we have until April waiting on the federal government to, um, pass their budget. It is something about, you know, I don't know how they're gonna do it, but it's, it's some kind of law, or I don't know what it's called, a law, whatever, but the, the counties have to spend the federal monies before they can spend state money. But if you don't get the money, you can't spend it. You know, it sounds terrible, that's what Dr. Monarch said. You know anything about it, Mr. Killian?
I don't, not specifically, I've heard of it.
But it says you have to spend the federal money, isn't that what he said?
It's, that's pretty much what the state requires. Before you touch their money, you gotta dip into the federal part first, which I think is probably a legislative mandate, more or less.
It's pretty.
Well, anyway, uh, she's requesting now, and I've already received, uh, request, uh, first, uh, person has already called about donating money to the Office of Aging. And I did ask, uh, I spoke with Mr. Killian about that, and where, if a person, if someone donates money, you know, where should it go? And he's, he recommended that goes to the Office of Aging in their account.
We can set up a donation account for the Office of Aging, but if it comes to the county, it ought to be tracked, so the county's money is.
Okay.
It could be, if it's designated for them, that's the only place it can send.
Okay. Well, anyway, she has the letter ready, um, to go out to, um, the different, uh, entities there. And also, um, she will be, uh, renting the, the office of the leisure center to, uh, to generate some funds as well. And no one has requested a use of it, however, and we're waiting on, we gotta come up with some kind of form or application that they have to use. Do you want them to use the same application? Do you want them to use the same application that the Brant Building uses?
I, I haven't seen that one, but if it's, if the Office of Aging is the one administering it, they should be able to use that same contract.
Okay, and also.
Now she had sent me, or she sent to William, who sent me a copy of it, I saw it today, a, a contract for someone who wants to rent, you know, setting out what the terms and conditions are and how much they have to pay and.
So where did she say you got it, you got it from?
I got it from Ms. Jones.
Okay, you got it today?
Well, she sent it to William, who sent me a copy of, a copy of that and the letter that she is sending out to everyone asking for donations. I'm soon, I'm soon to review it, right? But I will do and get back with her.
Has the committee taken a look at the letter and, and how does the rental fee compare with the rest of our facilities?
Well, the rental fee was five hundred dollars, two hundred fifty, of that being, um, an deposit. But that was what it had in there, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think, we haven't seen it, so I think, why don't we put that on hold?
Do you want, you want me to send y'all a copy, everybody a copy of it?
I wouldn't, I would advise her not to send that out, not the rental agreement, until council had a chance to look at it and say, yeah, Nate, okay?
Brown, we have a question.
Excuse me?
I, I just wanted, um, according to the Brant Building, the way we rented the Brant Building, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. And they put a deposit down, then they can get that two hundred, it's kind of like five hundred, if you put two fifty down, but you're gonna get two fifty back at the end. So that's how the Brant Building is located.
Okay.
And also, I was hearing y'all talk about receiving donations. Make sure that we are, um, with the state, um, because I remember when we were getting this fund, that we have to find, file for like charitable contribution, that we are qualifying for that when we're gonna be receiving these funds in. Because I don't know if we have that yet or not. But make sure, before we start receiving funds, that we do, are set up to receive charitable contributions.
Well, I think the county can receive charitable foundation any, any day of the week.
No, we filed exempt. So that's why I'm asking, because I remember in order to get funds, I had to fill out some paperwork. So make sure, I'm just saying, make sure we good before we start. Because I remember a lot of times we filed exempt and they asked if we received funds. I don't ever know us receiving them, but I was saying.
When you say filing exempts, exempt from what?
Um, I, I'll show you the paperwork, it's from the state, I'll show it to you, but I do know we had to open it up and file in order to get that, the funding that we got from Office of Aging. I had to do paperwork in order for us to get those funds in because they weren't gonna send them until we did it. But I'll show you the paperwork and then we can go.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's all.
And lastly, on October the ninth, the lower council government, uh, board meeting will be held at the Brant Building in Allenet at six o'clock. Um, a meal will be served at six o'clock, at six thirty, uh, a meeting will take place. And Dr. Monarch asked that I announce to the citizens of Allenet County that you're invited to attend and to find out what services, um, they provide for the counties. And if you would like for anyone from the lower council of government to come to your churches, your organizations, um, they would be more than happy to come and provide information about the services that's offered by the lower council of government. So I was asked to provide that information to anyone who might be interested. But county council and citizens, you know, you're invited to the county council, the lower council of government, October the ninth, which is on a Thursday, at the Brant Building at six o'clock. And I think we'll be having fried fish and, and whatever. It'll be a nice meal, Mr. Killian, so stay.
That's my wife's birthday, I'll probably have a nice meal that I'll have.
Oh, you have to eat. Okay, well, anyway.
You're letting people.
Well, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, done.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. I'm gonna be brief, uh, a little briefer than normally, but anyway, we did have our Public Safety Correction and Judicial Steering Committee meeting in Columbia this morning. And Allenet was well represented. Our pro-bid judge, Keith Smith, was part of that committee, as well as our jail administrator, Miss Connie Capers. So we spent about two hours looking at new legislation and old legislation that may come up come January. And we'll meet back again in November to, uh, to go over, to see if there's been any changes, any new bills been introduced, et cetera. So it was, it was a good day to be in Columbia, weather-wise, and we got a lot done. Probably had more attendees today on, uh, on that Public Safety Steering Committee than I've seen over the years. A lot of people getting involved, a lot of new elected officials. Also, I met with, uh, our historical, historical committee, uh, this week and going over the three grants that we have from USDA. And we finally got Constantine paid for their work, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-three thousand dollars. We appropriated fifty thousand, so we got about twenty-seven thousand left. The three grants will total about a hundred sixteen thousand, thereabouts. How contribution will be about thirty, thirty-nine thousand. And I'm asking that we allow the Historical Society to just go ahead and proceed, a letter to proceed with the Constantine group out of Charleston to do the preliminary design work, which is covered by the grant, on the roofing and some of the structural changes that will be paid by the grant. And, uh, I'm, I'm really impressed with what the Historical Society has done. You know, at first, we may have been off the, off kilter a little bit in terms of not being on the same page, but I think to really have a group that's worked as hard as they have to ensure that we have a facility. And, you know, my hat's off to USDA, you know, they fell onto those three grants for us and, uh, council has agreed to, uh, to do our contribution. And I think we're gonna be very happy with the amount of money that, uh, with the county money and grant money. It will give us a, a museum that I think our folks will be able to be proud of and we can move forward to doing some other things. Secondly, SRNS will be asked to contribute, as you know, they've already made, made, made some initial contribution to the county, uh, for some outfit, for, for other work. Anne and her group will be asking them, as well as other entities within our region, to contribute. So I'm gonna ask council at some point that we give them permission to go ahead and, uh, proceed with Constantine to do the design work to move forward. Also, uh, you know, one of the things that I think we should be aware of that SRNS is one of our major employer here in this region. And they've been very good to the county in terms of, uh, allowing us to do certain things and making contribution. And if you look at the historical significance, not only with two fifty, but also with the county itself, I think this is gonna be, uh, very impactful if we can allow them to help us again, and I'm sure they will. So just keep that in mind, uh, that's area that we see and pass every day. You know, once it's renovated, it's gonna make a nice little contribution to, uh, this area near the university and also to the community. So I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm just happy that we have a committee that's committed to doing what's good for Allenet County. What about history? Well, we all need to know more about our history and, and that's one way with the museum to preserve our history and to add on to it. So my, you know, my, uh, my pledge is to, to help that organization as much as we can because it's very, very vital that we, that we do it for generations to come. So that's my spiel. There's also some USDA, yes, ma'am?
The, about the SR, that's a veteran recite, that's the old, that's the name of the.
Yes, SRNS, yes, ma'am.
Is the funds that they give to, to us, is it on, in the budget?
Well, there's, there's a DOE fund, which is in the budget. But when SRNS give money, that's coming out there, out of their own pockets, out of the company pockets. And they can give as much as they want and give it to whoever they want. And because, because the association that Anne has with SRNS, you know, she's been able to get fund and we expect her to get additional funds to help us on this project, so, and we, and we thank her for that. Okay? Also, there's, there's another grant that I'd like to give, uh, the Historical Society permission to go ahead and pursue. And it's very similar to what we did at the Salkahatche Theater. It's no match, it could be up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we can certainly use. And at the appropriate time, I will, uh, will come back and make those recommendations and hopefully get, get a, get someone to second that for us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the committee, the Recreation Committee would like to know from council, would, um, they're looking at the possibility of leasing our concessions. Now do they need to bring that back to council to look at that agreement?
Absolutely, absolutely. We get Walter Legal Lady to look at it, yeah.
Roosevelt, you know?
Yes, I mean, it's just.
Roosevelt's in charge of that and, um, and to look at that. And I also would like to ask, um, Ms. Rice, um, because Lori sent me something about, uh, LSRA Nature Trail.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Clemson Extension, sorry, are you involved with that, with the kids in the park or something like that?
No, ma'am.
No?
The, the, um, nature, I don't think that one's been involved. The LSRA, you know, was an organization that got a grant to establish the trail. County owns the trail.
Yeah.
But we, we, we got the money, we got grant money from PARD and from other people to get it established and put things on it. Well, the LSRA is no longer a functioning organization. So, um, what, since it is a historical place, because Burton Sperry was a revolutionary wall site. Because it's a revolutionary wall site, if we could get, sat down at two fifty, to spend the money to get the trail operational again and to get the bridges inspected, because see, those bridges need to be inspected, then, um, you know, that would, you could open the trail up again. And so that's what Mike is doing. He came down about a month ago and walked and looked to see what he thought. He's been getting prices, um, what it would take to get it back operational. And he's gonna ask the commission to make that project, or the commission to pay for that.
You know, you know, I spoke with Senator Huto about that area.
Yeah, we said, wait, Senator Huto, we, you know, we talked about including that in a state park.
Right.
But this would just be work done preliminary before that's done.
Well, it doesn't have anything to do with kids in the park or whatever?
No, ma'am, not anything about that.
That's, I just saw that, that came out today and it's, it's a separate.
It's separate.
It's separate. Uh, I was surprised to see that because I, first I heard of it. But, uh, I think, we, you sent something out today on that, did you not? And so, yeah, so it's, I think we can save that for a later, a later time. I don't think it's at a point where we can, uh, we don't have a whole lot to save by there right now, except the fact that Clemson is involved in looking at it and working with the kids, kids, uh, kids that play or something like that. I, I just saw it maybe an hour or so before I, before I came to our meeting and.
You know, the only thing that I know about the Nature Trail, Mr. Chairman, is you want a picture of a big snake that went down there and saw, when I saw the snake, I didn't care.
But I had a, I had a picture, I showed you a picture?
Yeah, you did.
Did I?
Anytime you're in nature, you go sit out on the creatures.
Yeah, yeah. And Anne, just to piggyback on that, you know, we had talked with DOT and I know you've sent some information. Is Mike working in conjunction with?
He's, yeah, he's trying.
Okay, okay, all right. Very good. That's my report and we'll move on. Mr. Killian?
Good evening, sir. I have a number of items, um, to bring up, but I'll try to be as brief as possible. Council would ask for a recusal statement. I think, uh, the court has placed a, that you're, I don't think you have to adopt it because there's not a template in State Ball that says how you have to do it. Some people have had somebody write out, they just write it out and say, I'm just myself, I call this, and he's, the chairman.
Yeah.
But I thought this might be a format you might wanna use. And if you don't like it, you can call it something else. But, um, that's there for you to use tonight or whenever that opportunity has passed for them, so.
I think we, we will entertain a motion at appropriate time.
Okay. Uh, the second item is through, we saw a late starting update. The, of course, the board of three hours has adopted a resolution asking for the support and everything from each of the nine counties. Uh, we do not have a management agreement, a management agreement, uh, in, um, ready for you to look at yet. We should have it by your October meeting. Um, essentially what that agreement's gonna do is extend the life of our arrangement with each other from twenty thirty-three to twenty fifty. And also set up some of the parameters for financing, as we don't, you sell, it's getting ready to be built. Um, we've talked about the financing of it and the cost of it and the need to go up gradually on our fees. Um, but those fees are still, even when you do those increases in over five year period, you'll be about eight dollars lower than the current state average. And that state number's not gonna stay the same, that number's gonna go up too. So I think we have a tremendous asset there and this is an opportunity for us to expand it at a reasonable cost and I think, um, continue that, we'll, we'll, we'll use that land for four hundred years until we come up with some other wood here to trash. Uh, it's got plenty of, plenty of usable space left. Uh, just, we hope to have an agreement before we start first reading, it's gonna be in order to, to adopt it. Hopefully we start that in, um, October and finish it by the end of the year. Uh, so they can start putting the bond package together to go out to the market next spring and design's underway, uh, hopefully be under construction next summer. So, two-year construction period. Uh, the third item is, um, probably we're aware that we had some funds still available to us to guarantee political subdivision fund, the OPIWID Recovery Act, or OPIWID Recovery Funds. Uh, we were notified, we got a letter September the eleventh from the chair that we had received another grant, uh, for or from that fund, forty thousand, one oh four ninety-two. So those funds, I don't know if, turn, if we're seeing them yet or not, but, uh, we have been granted another forty thousand dollars from the OPIWID Recovery Fund to be used for the purposes that were applied for. Um, got notification from the Department of Environmental Services, the former DIAC, that they completed a review of a renewal permit for hazardous and mixed waste activities at Seminole Riverside. They have prepared a permit, a draft permit, and it's, it's open for pu, uh, public comment through September the second, twenty, from September the second. uh, through September the 2nd, 20, from September the 2nd to October 17th, 2025. Uh, if anybody's interested in commenting, I have a website you can issue comments to or otherwise, um, let, let them know how you feel about the permit. But I have, I have most of your details to see me after the meeting. There's an item on your agenda, I can run the agenda, you know, uh, to accept a grant from, um, the Department of Commerce, thank you, Department of Commerce, uh, for our friends at Hampton Lumber. Uh, so I'll be, if you accept that tonight, I'll be asking for your autograph, Mr. Chairman, before we leave. Um, but it's a $3 million grant that will go to, um, to the company for assistance in their startup, um, here in Ken. Uh, but that, uh, it's a non-matched grant, it's a $3 million grant, comes to the Department of Commerce and, um, I have paperwork there for you to sign if you approve it. And by the way, we have a listed as first reading for approval. You only have to get one approval to accept the grant, so you don't need to begin a reading process tonight.
Do miss eight thirty.
Okay. We have also, on a much darker note, we've also been, uh, made aware of a penalty that our friends at the IRS have mistakenly, again, issued to us. Uh, we are not subject to report on the federal unemployment tax. We're not, we're not liable for reporting on that. Mr. Leeport has gotten power of attorney from me and he's filed to get that money back. They did assess a garnish of about 52,000. Total penalty's 97. We have gotten it back from them in the past. And in fact, he, as part of his evidence, he showed them their, um, letter from December 31st, 2022, to their taxpayer, you're not required to file Form 940 because you have been determined to be an exempt organization under blah, blah, blah. So, but they did it again, so.
So, and what's the amount?
A total amount was 97.6. They've already gotten 52 for, uh, from a bank account, but, uh, but they should get it back once they see this.
Just the 52? That's, that's what we paid already?
52, uh, 52 is what it was, garnished from-
Okay.
Our bank account. Uh, but, so that should come back and the rest should be forgiven, uh, once they realize they've made the same mistake again. Very quickly, you recall that Southern Health Partners has issued or, um, exercised their right to terminate their contract with us, which will end the end of this month for inmate healthcare at the detention center. We did do an R P, sent it out to as many folks as we could find and tried to get a response. We received one response, um, from a company called Genesis, something LLC. We were paying about $48,000 a year to, uh, Southern Health Partners. These folks wanted about that same amount per month. Uh, it was over $400,000. So we, we thanked them for their interest and told them to have a nice day. Uh, but then we had gone out now and tried to find some assistance and what Ms. Kepres has done is found the doctor that's providing services to the Orangeburg County Detention Center. And she's also trying to operate in Vanburg and Barnwell as well. Full blown doctor, uh, in which I have not seen her proposal, but I've sat down with, uh, it looks like it's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 a year, back about where they were. Uh, but I will be bringing that too, we think we found, we've gone through the process, didn't get anybody that we could afford to pay for, but this seems to be an option that we're gonna be able to do. And we'll bring you that proposal back, uh, as soon as, uh, as she gets it to you. One of the things you've been talking about during your, uh, budget work sessions is employee health coverage, health insurance. Uh, we've just begun to scratch the surface on what we can and cannot do. Um, but the, um, the exit from P E B A is not as onerous as I thought it was. Uh, there is a 90 day requirement. Uh, we originally signed the original P E B A on April the 18th of 2011 and it renews that time too. They typically try to tie all renewals and all exits to the calendar year since that is the year they use for deductibles and all of that kind of thing. Uh, I don't think we'll be able to have a strategy in place or if we decide to go elsewhere, uh, in place by, by the time this turn to ends. But we do only have a 90 day exit strategy instead of having to wait till the next year.
Sure.
So we might be able to come up with something, uh, more palatable to our budget, uh, after we work through this with, with the folks at, uh, at P E B A. And I still, um, I downloaded the 960 page Affordable Care Act today. Uh, didn't quite get through it today, but I started looking at it and there are requirements for us to pay or to provide some level of coverage and it's called minimum level of coverage. I haven't been able to determine what that is yet. Uh, but there is a way, I think, to, for us to provide, they have different plans, uh, like reemb, health reimbursement plans is one of them, uh, kind of along the pattern that you talked about, Mr. Chairman, of providing some sort of service. But it still has to be considered a group plan. So I've got to figure out exactly how we can structure that, uh, and, and may ask for a little bit of assistance from somebody that understands health insurance a lot better than me. But, um, I think there's an opportunity. Uh, it's just, I don't think it's gonna be very quick, but we just have to work through the processes with P E B A and to go through finding other options that is, that are group plans that we can offer our employees, because we do have to offer the coverage. And then, uh, finally, uh, Monday, our additional financial assistance, CPA, Mr. Kirkley will start. He plans to be in the office two or three days next week. I don't know what his schedule will look like going forward, but one of the first things he's already started working on is a new chart of accounts. Uh, and once we get that new chart of accounts, I think we'll be able to take our new budget, place that in the new chart of accounts and then put that on the website. We can certainly put the ordinance up as, as quick as we can. Uh, this, the budget as it is now is very difficult to discern because prior year histories are not necessarily accurate.
Yeah.
Uh, but we'll work on that, but I have something we can put up on the website for the way to see. But I'm excited about having him come in and start baseline for us back to July 1 of this year. We still have some things to repair from last, but the thing I'm most interested in is getting a baseline to start, switching us over Springbrook, we're talking to them again. Shane will help us do that version as well. And then we'll have a new system in place that hopefully as we go, we can make the adjustments as we need to go and get everything posted to the general ledger like it needs to be posted. So I'm excited about having him start Monday and look forward to that. I'm glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Just a couple of things you and I talked about early in the week is, number one would be our, uh, bond for, I wanted to, yeah.
I sent three attorneys letters and emails in my office today, none of them responding, so I think they're all blocking it. But, um, Ray knows we wanna get that started, so I'm getting, going as quick as I can. Hopefully we'll have first reading to leave the news down.
Okay, alright. And, you know, we talked a little bit, counsel, about some fees. I kinda asked, uh, Clay to go ahead and take a look at parcels or households.
Yeah, I haven't got those numbers for you, but I've asked the assessor to give us total parcels and total improved parcels. Uh, because, I mean, if you do a, uh, EMS tax or fee, a tax will go onto every property. Uh, but if you do a fee and you only do the improved, there, you're assuming nobody's living on that property. Of course, you could have, still have to respond to that property. If you do a combined fire and EMS tax using pretty much the military, if we got down and separate that into a separate village, then that would, that village would cover all properties and, you know, the fire would have to go with brush fire or something on an unimproved property. Uh, if you do a solid waste fee, theoretically, a vacant beach property is not generating any solid waste, so we'd use only the improved properties for that, whatever that fee happens to be.
Sure, sure.
Uh, I'm trying, I'm trying to, to see what the numbers look like as far as improved properties, unimproved properties, what our budgets are for each of those particular services and, and back into a fee by dividing the parcel numbers into two. So, uh, and you could do a combination fee or tax, and/or taxes.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm familiar with situations where there's a solid waste fee that serves one purpose, but there's also a solid waste tax, it's letting countywide-
Yeah.
-that serves, because everybody can use convenience owners, whether they have door or pickup or not, they can still get used.
Sure.
Uh, so they, they should have to pay for the service. So there are a number of different ways to structure, uh, so I gotta get started on time to put all the numbers here.
Well, I, the last time we looked at it, and we looked at Aiken County, and I was surprised, y'all got a list this long in terms of the different kind of fees.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, you know-
I know.
You gotta pay for stuff.
You gotta pay for stuff.
The only one that's only, I don't think there's a, the only, the only fee that's only Aiken County tax bill that I recall, I'm getting ready to get mine in, uh, is the road fee.
Road fee.
We did, we did not have a separate solid waste fee, no, a separate solid waste tax.
Okay.
And it goes back to the Three Rivers thing, the solid waste tax hits everybody in the county, inside the city, outside the city, wherever, because the county is the one that gets billed with the tipping fee at Three Rivers and the county's the one that pays it. Even if Allenelle takes their trash directly to Three Rivers, Three Rivers weighs it, knows what it is and sends it to build up.
Sure.
Because they don't, they don't collect it from the city. So that's why countywide tax on tipping fee, on the tipping fee is fair, is covered by everybody.
Well, I've seen some private entity picking up at apartment complexes, which I'm sure when they go to Three Rivers or wherever, they're probably not saying Allenelle trash. And that's why our numbers are down.
No, those, those, they come in with those pickups, a lot of the, a lot of the commercial companies. If they show up in the front loader, Three Rivers is gonna bill it as commercial. And they may bill it directly to that company as a commercial, I'm not sure how they do that. Um, but if they show up and tell them, you know, solid waste companies are obviously very trustworthy, as, as they come to the gate, if they say it, this is Allenelle County residential, that's what they're gonna bill it as. Uh, now if it's in the front loader, they're questioned, they'll question it. And then they'll say, well, it's a apartment complex, you know? But they, they don't stop, they don't fill it up here, they're gonna go to Orangeburg and fill it up, or they're gonna go to someplace else, it's gonna, it's gonna be full before they go to Three Rivers.
Alright. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robson, can I ask something? When we were looking at this taxing, and I haven't had a chance to talk to you, but there's some other proposals that we're gonna bring to y'all, but is there a way that we could look at actually doing the EMS tax on its own, given the fact the other things that I'm gonna bring to you?
You talking about have its own breakout of village?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing we've talked about in our budget process, is doing more of that in the future. Uh, we can't do it in this budget because we're so-
You can have it break out and have it separate because there's some other things that I'm gonna be bringing to y'all and in your future that is gonna, that, that would play very well into it.
Yeah, you could have a separate EMS and fire fee or village if you were in the future. Some places have public safety millet to cover it all.
Cover it all, yeah.
And that, including sheriff's office. You know, I think, I think Lexington, anybody out there, a village for, a public safety millet that covers the sheriff's office as well, so, um, yeah, it's possible.
Alright. Dean, we'll look, they hear from you in the future, okay?
I will.
Alright. Mr. Simmons?
I don't have anything for, very short.
You don't have any?
I have nothing further.
Okay, alright. Okay, we're down to business. The third and final reading of the ordinance enacting the Allenelle County budget for F Y Counselor?
You need to read the whole thing?
No, we're just gonna go ahead and read that, that front paragraph that we did earlier.
You gonna read it again?
Yeah. And give us the section one numbers.
Okay. Um, this is an ordinance to establish operating capital budgets for the county of Allenelle, South Carolina for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to provide the regular taxes for Allenelle County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, to establish fees and service charges for Allenelle County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds to provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain fiscal matters related to county government and other matters related there too. Section one gives you the broad breakout of each of your different funds. Uh, general fund appropriation will be $12,988,44. Fire service will, appropriation will be $1,573,88. Non-run one will be $653,303. The airport will be 366,483. The water district will be $568,795. And the officer agent will be $515,150. And just if you'd like to get into the village, the village does not change from last year, so the levy stays the same.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion that we accept the ordinance as presented.
Second. Moving properly second, that we accept the ordinance for, uh, 20, 25, 26, but, any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye? Poses? Ayes aye. Thank you, Counsel. We're down to the first and final reading of the grant for economic development project Magnolia Hampton Lumber Company. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the, uh, grant for the economic development for project Magnolia.
Second. Okay, been moving properly second. I imagine the only question I would have would probably be for Matt and some of the other members. I'm sure this, the old money that we took back from a ting ting. Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses?
Ayes aye.
And we're down to Ascent Mark Fire Station and Chief Stanley?
You do not have the amendment agenda.
I don't.
You said, you said something out yesterday. Should be first order of the ordinance.
Yeah. Thank you. This is the first reading of an audience of the county council for Allenelle County authorizing the execution and delivery of a credit agreement by and between Allenelle County and Hampton Lumber Mill for payments in lieu of taxes.
Chairman, I'm making a motion that we accept the first reading of the ordinance.
Second. Moving properly second, that we accept the first reading of the fee in lieu agreement with Hampton Lumber. Any question? All in favor, let it be, be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses?
Ayes aye.
Okay. We, item D, resolution committing to ne, the, to negotiate a free, fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement between Allenelle County and Hampton Lumber Mills. We got a resolution, okay?
Mr. Chairman, this is essentially the initial resolution.
Yes. That's just, then we have not done that?
Okay, before my time, if you did, but I-
I'll make a motion anyway that we accept the resolution.
Yeah, that's what we said.
Yeah.
Okay, moving properly second, that we, we, uh, accept a resolution committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes agreement, and I'm sure we've done it, but we'll do it again between Allenelle County and Hampton Lumber Company.
We, we received all this documentation from, um, Haynesville, Central Boyd.
Gary Morris?
Gary.
So he hadn't rec-
Yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why, that's why we're late getting it on the agenda and he got to give the information, yes, all the extra paperwork yesterday.
Okay.
Um, so, we won't hurt to do again, just-
Well, we're gonna do it again, but I thought, I thought when we, we received the first fee in lieu, we made, we, we also received a resolution, but we don't wanna go back and we'll do, be on the safe side. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses?
Ayes aye.
Now we're down to, uh, Chief Franklin Stanley and thank Councilman Conley for having you to come. You- You've been pretty hard to get ahold, Franklin.
Not exactly, sir.
I've called a couple of times.
You called myself one?
Yeah. Over the last four, five weeks.
Come on, Mr. Bill.
Yeah?
Wasn't about this so much.
It didn't ring if you called, but let's put it like that.
Okay.
So, don't beat me up on this too bad, but we, we got some numbers on the fire station. Do y'all want a fire department report before we get into the, to the hot topic?
I'd be fine.
Okay. So, real quick, we've run several calls this month. We got one engine in the shop that's been in the shop for several months now that they're still working on wiring issues on. Trying to figure all that out. We did get the new pump in for one of the tankers. It's being installed now, we're waiting on just one more part to come in to go put that back together and get that truck back, back up and running. The second new tanker is supposed to be delivered in December to come off. As I remind, that contract has been signed, so we are obligated to that. The town has asked by third party to myself, and I have not talked to a town official. I've reached out, have not got in touch with the person that sent the message and left a message for a call back, haven't got that. But they have requested for us to remove all of our stuff out of the fire station at Town Hall. I'm not, I can't give you a lot of details on that because I don't know. Just want to make you aware of that, I'll continue to work on that, and as soon as I get answers, I'll bring that back to you.
No reason, but, but give it?
No, sir. I, I really don't know what the circumstances are, and I, I don't want to speculate because I don't, I don't know all the answers to that. We do have a job opening that we have put out.
I mean, Franklin, I don't even stop you, but I think what we need to consider, keeping it on that side of the track.
I agree, and, and I, I need to pull the contract when all of this was taken over by the county. Either the town relinquished all equipment to the county that they owned at the moment.
I know.
What I don't know is, I've got to pull that contract back out and look at it. I don't know what the circumstances was on the building itself with the fire station, do we? I, I don't know what it said, but so till we.
We don't own the building.
Yeah.
I mean.
Till we look at that, I mean, ultimately unless there's something in that contract that says they will provide us that building forever or whatever, I don't know that we really have a lot of grounds to stand on other than if there is something in that contract, and I don't know that. So, I just don't have the answers to that.
But you understand my concerns.
Yes, sir, I do. We only house one truck in that building that is actually operable. We do have a couple of older fire trucks in that building that we probably could excess, get rid of, because they're non-operable and they're older, older trucks, they're just not worth fixing. But other than that, we do have some other equipment that's stored in there that, my space is limited in other stations, so it's, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stanley, you said earlier that we'd already signed a contract for the two tankers. So, was that, does that mean that we don't get a fire station, that we don't have no money?
Let me get that.
We need to get there because, I mean, that's what it was written for, the.
So I'll, I'll give you the breakdown on the station, I have all the breakdown for what the money was designated for. So I, I'll, I'll give you that, and then we'll talk about numbers.
Okay.
But we will get there, I promise. The only other thing on the report was, we do have a job opening, we had an employee that, that turned in their resignation, and their last day was yesterday. So we're in the process of looking through applications, and then I'll get with HR and the personnel committee along with Mr. Killy, and then we will get that interview process set up to try to get that position filled back, so as soon as possible. So, I do know that I, I did briefly look through those applications, we got three or four that are qualified. Now, we, that's another subject, but we, we went through some of that before and then didn't have people show up, so. Okay, let's get to the hot topic, the fire station. So initially, we, we had a contractors meeting, Mr. Bill was present, Mr. Chaney was present. We probably had fifteen contractors in there, give or take. Took them out, looked at the site, told them everything we wanted, I got two bids back on that, out of fifteen contractors. The first bid was TK Builders for five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. The second bid on that was six hundred and ninety-eight thousand from street construction. Now, knowing the money we had, there was no way we could afford to spend that and build a fire station. So, took it upon myself to reach back out to some other general contractors to see if we could get some more bids in, give them the package we had, and I only received one other bid. But it wasn't until August, so it's been some timeframe between initially and getting this other bid. It still came in at four hundred and seven, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars from Priesture Enterprises. So we'll go back to the breakdown. We have two different funds for this station, when we looked at all of this, we had the one point two million dollars that was from the state that was earmarked for the fire station and some park equipment. And then we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was on the one cent penny sales tax. So, out of the one cent penny sales tax, we spent ten thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, which left us a balance of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, ten dollars left in that account. And that was to purchase the land and for the lawyer's fees to close on that.
And by the what?
The lawyer's fees to purchase the property for the fire station and the lawyer's fees to close that. So we basically was almost eleven thousand dollars is what we spent on the property and the closing costs. That was out of the one cent, the penny sales tax. So left us a balance of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, ten dollars in that account. Out of the one point two million dollars, we've, we've spent sixty thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars on the air packs, the SEBA's, and we've purchased the one tanker truck for four hundred and forty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Now leaves a balance of six hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents in that account. Now, we have one other truck that we've signed an agreement on to purchase for four hundred and, four hundred and forty-five thousand, give or take, right around what that other tanker truck was, which came out just short of nine hundred thousand for the two trucks. So, with what we're going to have left, we're sitting at about three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, give or take, in that account. What's that?
Three hundred and what?
Three forty-nine, give or take. Now, if you go back to the breakdown on what that one point two million dollars was used for, it was ten thousand dollars to purchase the land, which we purchased out of the one cent, guarded penny sales tax. The fire station was, was given two hundred thousand dollars in that breakdown, which we still have that much plus a little bit in that account. Five hundred thousand for a tanker truck and four hundred thousand dollars for a used pump. So, there's your nine hundred thousand dollars that we spent on the two trucks, which was earmarked for trucks for that station. And then we had in there for fifty thousand dollars for well construction and forty thousand dollars for park equipment. So that was the breakdown, what was sent to the state, and I don't know if y'all have a copy of that.
And forty thousand dollars for what?
Park equipment.
That was for park, now that wasn't part of the fire station.
But that was in the one point two million dollars.
Yeah, it was in the one point.
So that money's still sitting in there.
Right.
For park equipment.
Right.
So, that's where we stand on that. You know, when we looked at all of this, obviously we thought for sure for three hundred and forty thousand dollars, we could put a building up, and I was pretty certain we were going to be able to do that until we got bids back. That's a forty by sixty building, we could shrink the size of that building a little bit. I don't know if we're going to shrink it a hundred thousand dollars for it.
So, Chief. We got a hundred and thirty-nine thousand left.
One forty-nine ish after everything with numbers.
And three forty from the one point two.
Well, it's with, with, and yeah, penny sales tax, we had the one point two million dollars. What's left in that minus what we got to spend on that second truck, we're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of two hundred and forty, of three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
That's a combination of.
That's a combination of the two.
So we, we're going to build it based on the numbers I've seen.
And out of that, forty thousand has to go towards park equipment?
No.
No?
Forty thousand's left in there outside of the, or, outside of the, the fire. That's, that's what was earmarked between the two for the, for the funds for that fire station.
Did we, did we just do the, the bid request on SKEBO, or did we, did we run anything in the newspapers, or? Is that something?
If we. Yes.
We didn't do anything in the local, I'm just, you know, I was thinking, should we do another round of bids? And try to.
Well, that's, there's a couple of options, I think, I think we definitely need to officially reject the two bids that we got with the first bid process. Just so they know that they're closed out and it's done. After you do that, you can do what the chief did, you can go out and see if you can, because you, you went through a formal bid process and you just didn't turn it on work. You can do what he did, and we could, they, they may be able to hold that price for some period of time. Or we can, we need to probably change the spec a little bit, as you mentioned, maybe shrink the building or whatever, and then go do a, a rebid and see what happens. There's another thought that's crossed my mind, sitting here, there's another two hundred thousand dollars on the sales tax for the St. Mark Community Center, I don't know what, does the fire department play there at all, or is that a different project?
That was a different project.
Okay, so that money's not available.
But it could be possible.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, you, you have to build it since it's on the ballot.
But could you not combine the two?
Probably with a little legislative on council's part, I can check with our legal folks on that. But the other thing that really comes to mind is I think we have, the treasurer, you, you have gotten the last allocation from sales tax one, correct? So we know what sales tax one brought in. So what we need to do, and I did some rough math this afternoon, I think we have collected more than the projects we budgeted for. If there are excess funds, you're required to spend it on anything on this ballot that didn't get funded completely. The fact that we've got several projects that haven't even started, we really don't know where we are as far as excess money. If we can determine how much excess money we got, then you can use the excess in the sales tax towards this fire department because it's on the ballot.
Well, the two hundred for the community center would definitely be available because, I mean, you can't build a community center for two hundred thousand, so. I mean, that'd be a project that would never be able to accomplish.
The next catch, sales tax two was the reimposition of sales tax one. You have to use those funds to finish these projects first.
So.
One thing is.
In sales tax two?
Sales tax two money has to be used to finish sales tax one stuff first before you can start with sales tax, if it's underfunded. Now, if you've got extra money from sales tax one, you can spend it on that community center or the fire department or anything else that's on that ballot.
So we'll have, I mean, so the funds will be available at some point in time, no matter what.
If, if, if you have access, you can do that. And I want to get our legal folks to reiterate that opinion to you, that, that's my opinion researching the statute today. So I think there's some options, but it's not going to make things happen fast. We have to do some work on what gets, what hasn't been done, what we think, we got to get a bid, we got to get a bid price. We got to see, after that, we've got to see what's left, then we can settle up and build a community center or. If you hadn't reimposed the tax, if the tax hadn't been reimposed and you couldn't fund something else, then it goes away because you didn't reimpose the tax. But the fact that the voters did, that's why it's so hard to do these things very accurately because you're predicting what construction prices will be set in this one. And if I could do that, it'd be all over the stock market, y'all never see me, so.
Mr. Killy, I'm looking at the projects here for the, the penny sales tax and for the Appleton, Appleton Community Center and land acquisition. And I've been looking for land ever since I've been on council for the community center in Appleton and have not had any luck, and I've discussed it with council on several occasions, that was two hundred thousand dollars. And then also on the ones that sales tax was to St. Mark Community Center and land acquisition, that's two hundred thousand dollars. That's four hundred thousand dollars right there that have not, has not been used.
Well, if, and there are what they call extenuating circumstances that allow you not to build something that's on your ballot, but you have to go through them around your elbow a couple of times to prove why you couldn't build it. And the DOR is looking at, the Department of Revenue is looking at these sales taxes a whole lot closer than they used to. They're making them do accordingly with boards, which they didn't even enforce for the first fifteen years of these sales taxes. Some of us didn't even know we had to do them, but ever since our friends in Rixland County had so much trouble with their transportation tanks, the Department of Revenue has been looking at all of these sales taxes, the lost rollback tags, the CPSTs, all of them. So, I might say it can't be done, we have to prove that there was no place that we could put the community center in Appleton, and we couldn't find a place, couldn't buy the property, nobody would. There has to be, a lot of that due diligence you got to do to show why you can't spend that money for what you, what your voters.
Nobody's selling the land, and Mr. Hutcho's been really, you know, trying to help me, you know, he lives out in that area, and he'll tell you, there's nobody selling their land out there.
If, if, we probably can use that as an extenuating circumstance, there's no way to locate it there.
Now, for the St. Mark Community Center, there is land available, there is land available for that. But that is something that we did not discuss, purchasing land for the community center. I mean, but the same person or people that sold the land for the fire station have additional land that's available for a community center, but that was nothing that council ever discussed.
Oh, it's on the ballot, St. Mark Community Center and land acquisition.
Right, uh-huh, it's on the ballot, right. But I have a question about the tankers. Now, we don't have a fire station, we don't have no building, so we get the tankers, what we going to do with them? Because they are for St. Mark, right?
One of those is going there along with another truck we have in the county.
One going where?
One is going to St. Mark Fire Station, along with another truck that we have in the county that will be put in that station.
But now, those two tankers was, is for, is written in this earmark for St. Mark. It wasn't, it wasn't written for another station.
Correct, but I'll.
Is that right?
As soon as I get my ISO report in a minute, you'll understand why.
Is, you know, here it says for the two tankers, here is for the St. Mark Fire Station.
Council had this discussion and, and, and we agreed to, to do that.
I understand what you, we agreed to, but I'm talking about what's on the earmark.
Well, we're buying, we're buying two, the, the, St. Mark's getting two fire trucks.
That's not, you know, I'm talking about. I'm talking about what's on this, I'm talking about what's on here.
They're both tankers.
Mr. Conley, I'm talking about what's on here. You know, seems like we are concerned with the tankers and we're going to take them someplace else, and we don't even have a fire station.
Well, I don't think.
And I don't, I mean, you know what, I don't mind, I mean, if, if, if other stations, fire stations in the county needed to use, you know, the tankers or whatever, I'm not arguing that because that's, that's important. But what I'm saying that what is written on this earmark is for those two tankers.
And we're going to take.
And we don't have no station, Mr., I'm not blaming you for it, you know, because we got to find someone to build a station. What I'm saying is, Mr. Conley, you're saying that, you know, we signed a contract for it, that's true, you said it too, that's true, that we signed a contract to get those tankers, but where are we going to use the tankers, and we don't have no station?
We're going to build a station.
Thank you.
Yeah, nobody's saying we're not going to build a station, we just got to figure out how to move forward.
I think somebody need to figure that out.
I've always, that's what we're in the process of doing.
I think you might be able to find the money from what I suspect will be excess funds.
If not, we'll just have to make it.
I think that's.
We don't know what excess we got until we get everything else bid and purchased.
Well, I think that's what council was always counting on, the fact that we could take one of those community centers. Well, I think that's what council was always counting on, the fact that we could take one of those community center and, and use that fund as a combination. The fact, at least I felt that was, that was feasible and I think it still is. You may have to jump through some loop to get it done. And, and I think, excuse me, Ms. Jennings.
Excuse me?
I think the, the point is that the community needs a fire station and the equipment that goes with it. And I think that's gonna happen. I, I, I would not, uh, I would not say anything less. And I would say it without any reservation. It's gonna happen. And I think council is committed to make it happen. Now, I know we did some, we did some, uh, things a little different. Cause when you came and wanted to air pack money, we, we said yes. When you wanted the tanker too, we said yes. But we always felt that there would be enough funds to make this happen.
Right, and that's what I wanted to explain to Bill. So where, where those numbers come from and why we thought, or when given the idea that there was gonna be funds there was, we actually went and got a price on a, on a forty by sixty building, just what we wanna put up, along with concrete installed, was a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. In my mind, there was no reason why for two hundred thousand more dollars, we couldn't put concrete down on the outside pad and finished inside. Obviously, that's not what today's prices are.
What kind of building is this? I mean, a local person couldn't, we're not talking about building the White House. I mean, a local person couldn't build a building?
This is the problem, Ms. Jennings.
This is a local person.
I don't know about that, okay? That's what I asked.
Yeah, and that's what I'm explaining. So international building codes comes into this, okay? And so there's certain codes that go into what we can and cannot do is, is, and we, we've been through this with the J L. I've been through a hundred thousand meetings, uh, because we didn't go about doing it the right way and didn't hire a general contractor. And tried to be our own general contractor for the county and that didn't work out real good for us. And so it comes down to international building codes and C C I, which is who we contract with, will not allow us to get anybody local in peace and party together. So you have to hire a general contractor. How much one of these general contractors gonna make off this job? I don't know. But that's what the law says and that's what we have to do. Um, I agree with you. It would be very nice to go out and find somebody local or for us to be able to purchase that building and put up ourself. But that's not, I'm not gonna be part of that.
Well, how much are we short of? How much are we short of? We're talking about three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And so you're talking about.
We're, we're about ninety, ninety thousand dollars short.
Well, we got the money here with the, uh, with the Appleton, um, Community Center.
Still through the process.
We still gotta get it. Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're saying. We have to go through the process to get it.
You can't just say I'm not gonna build it.
Okay, I understand that. I understand that.
Okay.
Okay.
We can move on. Go ahead.
No, no, we're not moving on. I got a question.
Okay, go ahead. Got a question? Go ahead.
You tell him, go on, I mean.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying, you got a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll say it back to the tankers. I just need to get a clear understanding of where are these tankers gonna be used?
One of.
Cause they own this, they own this, uh, airmark for St. Mark.
Right, so, so let's look at it like this.
Can we use, can we change that, Mr. Killian?
I, I understand the profit. You don't need two tankers in one fire station. So what we're gonna, what the chief's gonna do is move a truck, a, a pumper truck, not a tanker, that will actually put out a fire instead of just getting water to it.
That's a fire truck?
That's a fire, uh.
The poker truck is a fire truck?
Yes, the pumper tanker pumps the water to the tanker, to the pumper, then will put the water on the house. So you need a pumper and a pumper tanker.
Do you need that location?
Cause I need the fire. I did this for a long time. So St. Mark is gonna get a used pumper truck from somewhere in the county and a brand new tanker. So we just, other tankers wanna go to somebody else. Cause you don't wanna put two tankers in the fire station and not have something throw it on the house.
Okay, first, uh, St. Mark gonna get the fire pumper and the other tanker going someplace else.
And, and, and I'm gonna fix and explain the reason.
Well, wherever they're going, they need to pay for it and give us the money, so.
It's gonna go, it's gonna go, stay with the county. It's in the county.
So the, the second thing that we're dealing with in the county is our ISO. And so the reason for buying two tankers out of this was because we need haul water. We will not get our ISO rating back if we can't haul enough water to different points in the county. So right now, we can build that fire station in St. Mark, but it's not gonna help us until we get our ISO rating back. Everybody in the county outside of a thousand foot of a fire hydrant is at a ten. And that's where we're gonna stay until we get the ISO straight.
So is that five miles? You said a thousand what?
Thousand feet.
A thousand feet?
A mile is five thousand two hundred and eighty feet. So you had less than a fourth of a mile. Fifth of a mile.
The common of feet you said?
A thousand feet.
A thousand.
So here, my house is more than a thousand feet from the last hydrant. I'm at a ten. I'm with most of the county, which causes your insurance to go up. And so that's the other part of what we're working on. So we've hired, we've hired a firm. He's come down, he's met with us, he's pointed out numerous things from our old reports, our last ISO rating report, that we can correct. We're waiting on him to send us, we sent him two M O's this week, waiting on dates that we can try to set up to get all of the players to the table. That's gonna include whoever from council, administrator, myself, water departments within the, within the town entities, um, dispatch, Jody would be involved, the sheriff's gonna be involved cause he's over dispatch. All of these parties make up a ISO rating. You get points for certain things within all of this stuff. And so he's pointed out numerous things that we can correct across the county. Um, that we possibly, with, with a little bit of effort and, and getting people involved, that we could go from a five to a four easily, maybe even to a three depending on how it falls. Which every, every drop you do brings people's insurance down.
Well, Mrs. Stanley, because I don't know who, who gave it, whenever I started, uh, looking into the fire station and the location of the fire station in St. Mark. And I don't know who told me this, but they had me riding for nothing because they say wherever the fire station is located in all, in each direction, five miles, you know, five miles out.
That's a hundred percent correct. Once we get our ISO rating back in place, our haul water.
But then after you get it back in place.
It makes no difference. If we don't pass that test, five miles is out of the question. It goes back to only a thousand feet from the nearest hydrant. So that's what we're working on. So these tankers that we bought, putting one in St. Mark and moving one to another location is gonna help us get our ISO rating back.
So what location you gonna put it in?
That'll be determined by time. It, it's formulas that this, that, that they run. Depending on distance from a fire station to the furthest point, where your water sources are.
Your consultant's gonna help you determine that.
Absolutely. He's gonna walk us step by step through it, help us with the table one to the ISO folks to get this back. What we've done is gone out and looked at ponds. So we can use ponds for water sources where we used to have to put dry hydrants in. Now they have things called turbo draft. It would be a piece of equipment that we keep on our, our trucks that when we get to a water source that is, obviously, they gotta have fifty year drought studies and that's part of what he's gonna do for us. Is come in and study these ponds, look at them and put his stamp on them that says, yes, they work and I assume it'll sell.
They have ponds in St. Mark?
There's water sources all over the county. So, so his step is to come in, we've already got a map laid out. We've, we've pinned all of the water sources that we can get our apparatus to and access because we have to be within two hundred feet of that pond. Where dry hydrants used to be right on the water source, now with this new turbo draft, we can actually draft water from two hundred feet away from that pond. So that's what it's gonna do for us now. I S O accepts that. And so his next step is to come down, he's gonna look at the map when he comes, but he wants to meet with everybody and talk about all of the things he has gone through our report and found that we need to correct.
I thank you for all of that information, Mrs. Stanley, and you're doing a good job explaining it, but I still don't understand all of that. The only thing I wanna know is, are we gonna get a fire station?
I, I believe there will be funding available in time.
Cause if we got somebody in here from St. Mark, I don't wanna beat me up when we in here.
I mean, there's absolutely no guarantee that the excess money will be what I can anticipate it will be. But we won't know that until we know what all these other projects is gonna cost. So it's gonna take a while. It's not gonna happen overnight.
It's not gonna happen overnight, you say? No?
And we've gotta get all the other sales tax projects on sales tax one out for bid and see what they're gonna cost. So we'll know whether or not we have excess funds left. Those excess funds can be, have to be used on sales tax one. But you don't know what that excess is cause we haven't done all the projects.
That's not gonna take a year or nothing like that to do something?
I have no idea. I, we, I, I haven't even started looking at specifications of, of some of these buildings. If anybody's done it, I don't know.
But in the meantime, we could, we could reach out for, for new bids to see if we could get closer to what available money we have.
For the money we gotta vote? What we have in Appleton is a thirty by fifty station. That's probably not gonna be feasible with these new trucks. They're a little bit bigger. These are three thousand gallon tankers. We might shrink that building to a forty by fifty. I, I don't, you're not gonna find a hundred thousand dollars in a ten foot building. Um, but.
I think we need to utilize all the resources we have, whether it be newspaper or whatever. I mean, I know we've done Squebo. Uh, I see we're all putting all their bids in the, in the brown paper.
Well, and Mr. Bill, I'll tell you, we have at least fifteen contractors there. And I got two bids back from fifteen contractors. So I, I mean, I, we, we've done our due diligence to, to try to make it, to make it work. And, and I apologize for the holdup, but I've been waiting two months on this last bid I got. I mean, there was no way we could afford the first two bids. It was impossible. People have so much work right now, I mean, there's, there's so much money.
Could you, could you get with Preister and see what cuts could be made to get us closer to our number or to get us within our number?
Since you, since you, I think if you ask him about a thirty fifty, forty, forty fifty building, whatever. You can see if, I can reach back out and just say, hey, you know, what can we save?
Well, the thing is, and we can reach out and, and we can redevelop our plans, but whatever we decide to go with, we want it to be accurate and be able to serve the community.
And that's why we looked at that size building because I know what that thirty by fifty in Appleton, you can't hardly move in that building.
I don't. It's, it's tight.
It's tight. And, and you know, with these bigger trucks, if we go to a forty by fifty, it's, it's gonna be tight. I mean, it is gonna be what it's gonna be. I mean, we'll make it work. And we can certainly ask for additional bids based on the difference in spec. But at the same time, I, I wouldn't want us to cut ourselves short.
Oh, no. No.
Even though it's gonna take a little longer than we wanted to to get there. Uh, it, cause I, I think, I truly think we'll be able to put together the money once we know what these other projects that we haven't started on will be.
Well, it's gonna have to be functional. If it's not gonna be functional, then we might as well just leave it, leave it on the table.
And I'll be honest, if we cut it down, that's gonna take a full bathroom out of it. If, in today's environment, um, with all the carcinogens that are out there now and everything that burns, we need a full functioning bathroom. And when I say that, it needs to have a shower, the whole nine yards in it. Um, just because we come back from these fire calls, we need to rinse off, wash off, whatever. There's certain things and I, and I'm telling y'all, I cut it down as much as we could, but it is what it is and I, I can't, you know. I can cut it down to a shell if that's what you want, but it, but.
No.
But let's don't be mad at the unresolved if it's, if it's a shell.
No, we want a nice fire station.
And I want you to have a nice fire station.
We don't want a shell.
And I want St. Mark to have a nice fire station.
No, we want, we want, and, and also, Mrs. Stanley, I, I've been recruiting this. Cause I'm fireman, right?
I, I hope you give me plenty of people.
Fireman, but I might as well stop because we don't even have no station.
We gonna get a station, Ms. Jennings, I promise. We gonna make it work.
But I have, you know, some people that wanna, you know, volunteer to set my area down.
I would say continue to recruit.
We don't have a station.
They continue to recruit. We got, we got, it gotta be trained first. It gotta be trained first.
Lay, lay on drugs aside, if you do have folks in that area that do wanna volunteer, they can join the department right now. Because there's a certain amount of training that has to happen. It's not, it's not just walking to fire station and wave a wand. I mean, there's, there's, there's training that goes behind that. And so, and saying that, even in the process of building this fire station, we can start from getting people through classes and getting trained. So that when that station does go up, that they're, they're ready to go.
I'll let them know, but you wouldn't believe this, Mrs. Stanley. I can't even go on Walmart. I can't even go on Walmart when someone asks me, when are we gonna get a fire station?
Well, I'm scared every time I drive uptown, you go see me and try to get it.
No, not, but I mean, but I ain't there.
I mean, I promise, I've been working on it. It's a slow process. It's, it's not been ignored, but.
Well, Mr. Killian said that he gonna make it work, so I'm, uh. He gonna make it work, so I'm putting his hands, but I hope it doesn't be a year.
No, I'll go to the make it work without putting y'all in jail. I don't wanna do that, sorry, I promise. That's why we have to do this. Appleton is a thirty by. It's a thirty by fifty, so. What you basically have is thirty by forty, this truck sitting in, you have two little trucks on the backside. With a small bathroom, a small utility closet, a very small office. That's it. So, and, and the bathroom is just a pole and a sink, that's all.
But I think we all became aware of this past week when you saw New York City going through their ceremony on the nine, the nine, nine eleven. And the number of firemen and, and civilians that are still suffering because of the debris and the air quality.
So it's, it's definitely different environment than when I started thirty-one years ago. Um, you just take household furniture, for instance, versus what it was then and versus what it is now. And the carcinogens are just crazy. You can't, you just can't read that stuff anymore. And.
Um, don't the current, um, the new penny sales tax we just passed, don't you have tankers and stuff in that penny sales tax too?
There is a tanker in there and that is a key part to getting this I S O back on that new referendum.
So we're gonna have three tankers?
It would be three total if, if that referendum goes right back through.
That's what I knew, I knew it was on here. That's what I'm saying, so it's gonna be three tankers.
And that's what I was hitting them, Ms. Jennings, on these tankers is, they will be strategically placed across the county so that they're in the right stations to be able to deliver water to certain areas depending on what they, how much water they haul. But yes, one of those will stay at the St. Mark station.
So now, when you talk about the tanker, let me understand, this is something that will carry the water from one place to another?
It does have a pump on it. It is capable of fighting fire. But, but the difference in, in you, it does have hand lines on it. You can pull it off. It's got twelve hundred fifty G P M pump on it. But they're basically designed just to haul water and be able to pump water from one truck to another or to dump in a quarter pool, which is above ground swimming pool that we carry on our trucks that we drop off. Can range up to three thousand gallons and we, we draft out of those to the pumper. But you, you will need a pumper in that station and that's what we're gonna provide is a pumper in there along with one of those tankers.
And I got one more question, cause I think it's also in that penny sales tax, something like this, the Sycamore Fire Station. Do we have enough money in there for a Sycamore Fire Station?
Probably not. No, we don't have that.
No, we gotta take it. We gotta take it. Sycamore does have, is that a pumper for Sycamore?
No, the, the current penny has a, a fire station and a well in the, in the penny. And we, we, we just basically took the mayor, the mayor got a bid and that's where the.
Yeah, so, so that station will expect that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy the building and put it up, the concrete. So it's two hundred and sixty something thousand dollars that's in that referendum as well as our removal. Don't pull me to that, but I think it's two hundred and, I think it's two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars if I remember right, build that station now. That station's gonna sit right on the roadway, which will not entail all of the concrete that we're gonna have to put out in front of this one. This, this concrete alone, just for the pad and the roadway was thirty, uh, I don't have it right, thirty something thousand, almost forty thousand dollars just for the concrete work. That ain't what the building was sitting on. That was only concrete to hold the trucks because of the weight of them and the driveway coming in. Now, that we won't have to do in Sycamore because of the location of where that one is.
Can I ask one more question, Mr. Chair? Mr. Killian, on the, um, airmark here for, on the airmark, Mrs. Chair?
Go ahead. You didn't give your chance to say yes and no. But I'm gonna say yes, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Mr. Killian and Mrs. Stanley, you know, since we're on the, our airmark, the, uh, this forty thousand dollars here for, uh, the recreation park equipment in St. Mark, that's on here. So when you, when you said you're gonna wait to see, we gonna use this or not, or?
Not that, the sales tax money. We have to, we have to, we have to see what, no, we have to see what the sales tax projects that aren't done yet are gonna cost. And then we'll know what our.
And then we'll know what our excess, if any, we have to go towards these projects.
But for this, you have to spend it for whatever is on here.
Unless you get whoever provided it, your mother, your daddy, your daddy.
So, my question, question, uh, for Mr. Killian and Mr. Chairman of Council, um, for the recreation park equipment that's on this. And it's forty thousand dollars, and we gotta move the park equipment from Fairfax, couldn't it go here? Couldn't it go here and we purchased the land? Because we purchased, you know, the land for the fire station was just ten thousand dollars. And we're committed to remove this, the equipment is sixteen thousand, that is twenty-six thousand dollars.
Is this on the new sale tax?
No, 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 this is on the airmark.
That's on the airmark?
This is on this airmark.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm just, you know, asking.
That's, that's something we need to look at.
Yeah, we can look at it, but I mean, the obvious, the specs gotta tell us when you can change the direction.
Just what I asked.
But, Clay, if we look at the excess, whatever excess money that's available, and that, that excess cannot complete any of the projects that's remaining, then that's a done deal. In other words, if I got two hundred thousand and all the projects that I have completed, the cost anticipated is greater than two hundred thousand. I cannot take the excess and complete the project.
You have to take the excess and spend it on the projects that are on that ballot.
Okay, so I could, I could end up spending two hundred thousand on a project that I will never complete.
No, that's why I, I will verify.
Okay.
You have to take sales tax two money to finish the one project, if you don't have the money for it.
Okay. If that's, if that's the case, then we really gotta look at this very closely. Because...
And I could be wrong in that, but I, that's the way I read the statute, but I'd be a little lost.
Well, I'm just thinking, if, if, if the excess money doesn't allow you to complete a project, why start it? And if you don't have a number two coming behind that, then where are you?
Well, when you don't have the number two, that, you spend it, there are different ways. If you can't finish the projects on sales tax, on the first sales tax, and there is excess, and you did re-impose, then whatever you can finish, you have to finish. If you can't finish it, then there's certain ways you can get it to a capital fund, but again, that's...
That's our bill.
That's difficult.
Okay.
Particularly since you've re-imposed. The voters said, build this, they agreed to build this, and they also said, agree to build number two. But I think, if, again, I'll talk to Walter and Gray and others, but I really believe you have to finish one before, with, with two money before. So, you don't wanna start all your two stuff right at the beginning, even if we're gonna do a bond score. So, why to build all of that into the, to the, to bond covenants here to answer?
Okay. Any more questions for, see Stanley?
Got anything else, Ms. Jennifer? I'll try to answer.
I'll try.
We appreciate you coming.
Thank you for your information.
Thank you. We down to courthouse lighting. I asked Elaine to send you information on that. It's a, something that I had a chance to take a look at, uh, courthouse lighting. You know, the ceiling's pretty high. We don't have a lift to put us up there, but she has engaged this company to do all the lighting, and we have a lot of lights that actually out. I know there's probably thirty or forty different lights in the courthouse, not only the courtroom area, but throughout the courthouse area. And we don't, we're not a crib with ladders and lift to do it. The proposal she given us is eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. She's willing to pay twenty-five percent of that, take some of her 4D money and have the county pay. So, I will entertain a motion at appropriate time. I know you've had it for a couple days, looked at it. Is there any other way to do it? And according to Elaine, there's no way. These, the good thing about it, the lights are guaranteed replacement. The company will come back to do the replacement. It's a one-time charge, you know, to do it. There's nothing to come back and actually do the relighting. So, I think it's a good deal. And it probably, I think, I think I saw somewhere in you, probably somewhere in your proposal, to these lights, about fifty thousand hours. That's, that's, that's a lot of lighting, you know?
I think supportive note, too, that the projected savings yearly is eight hundred and forty dollars a year. So, you know, it's definitely gonna pay for itself.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alrighty, now, we talked a little bit, you know, based on our treasurer, we talked a little bit on about the fee that we charge on municipalities, you know, with, and for the vehicle and motor craft. And then we have here landfill fee EMS, that's something we already talked about, that we're gonna be looking into as we move forward. But I think we, uh, need to at least make a decision on the administrative fee for vehicles and, and the motor craft. And I will take any recommendation from council. I think we heard from my treasurer, right now it's a fifty cents. And she recommends that we go up to two dollars.
It's two dollars per, per transaction?
Yeah.
Per notice that's sent out.
Per notice.
Yeah. Yeah, per notice.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the treasurer.
Okay, moving properly second, that we allow our treasurer to charge administrative fee of two dollars per transaction. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Um, Chair, can I say that this is not going to an empty consumer now, this is what the town will take hours off of what we already paid.
Well, we did not say...
Yeah, I wanted to make clear so they won't take this here two dollar charge on these bills, so.
Well, I think, thanks for the clarity, but I think we said the municipality fee that we charge them, no. There's no way, there's no way they can charge the customer.
Right.
Because, because you actually doing the billing, right?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna send a notice out to the municipalities as soon as possible?
Oh, yeah.
We need to send a letter to you two mayors. Uh, we'll do that. It won't go into effect until January one, the new tax year. So, the bills that the treasurer sends out, like I remember, early December, January, will be the first bill to... And the county, the city will recharge that new fee for.
So, is that something that's gonna come from you or the treasurer?
I'll be glad to send it right and right.
Yeah, I would say, Clay, go ahead and, and I'd be happy to sign it. Maybe the, both of us, the treasurer can sign it because since she's gonna be doing it. Why don't we get a double signature?
Well, the treasurer bill for the collection, that's right.
Now, we're down to, I didn't see Blackjack. Been waiting all night to hear about Blackjack. Okay, go.
Good to see you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Uh, so, I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, so, this is already an existing multi-county industrial park that's in Banburg, and Project Blackjack needs additional land to expand in this park. And so, this is just making sure that each of the counties is acceptable, that is acceptable for each of the counties that they do expand in this park in Banburg.
Blackjack is currently operating, right?
Yes.
What does that, remind us what that company is again?
Uh, I can go over to that executive session.
Okay, it's not, okay, never mind. That's not, that's not a board, really, we're just adding acres to the multi-county park.
Is it in the Rose, Crossroads?
It's Holland Hitch plant, Old Holland Hitch plant, right.
Oh, that's the one in town, then?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I don't know how you can provide more land there. Are you gonna include it if outside the park?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but it's, it's already, everything tax-wise is already set up. Um, so, this would just be a benefit for, for Allendale because everything is in additional county, but with the revenue sharing between the county parks.
So, we, we'll be getting some revenue out of this one?
That's the goal.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the Blackjack continuing resolution.
Second. Moving properly second, that we accept Blackjack, uh, resolution to expand the industrial park there in Banburg County. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poses? Aye, sir. Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Happy to be here.
Yes, sir. Do you need to go into the executive session with us?
If you, if you wish, I, I can, but otherwise, um, I can provide, Gary Morrison, um, um, other members of our team will be able to provide more information of the details.
Okay, alright. Well, we, we're dealing with Gary on, on Hampton, so we're, we'll get him to come down there.
I think he was planning on coming to second, bringing you up.
Is he?
Yes, sir.
That'd be a good time, then. Okay. Let's go back to our courthouse lighting. Make a recommendation that we approved that for the, uh, the courthouse paying twenty-five percent. And we've taken up another seventy-five percent. And it's, it will be a cost saver throughout the years, so. Gotta get a motion.
So, moving, Mr. Chairman, we accept the proposal in courthouse lighting.
Moving properly second, any question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, is this, uh, this seventy-five hundred dollars gonna fall in our budget? Is it, we got some expenses for courthouse that could cover that?
We do have some, uh, billing money. We also have some contingency funds that can take care of.
That's all ahead.
Very good. Any more questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Aye, sir. Secondly, I would like to get a motion from council to allow our historical society to proceed with Constantine Development on developing the specification for the county museum project. And they will be paid out of the grant money.
So, move.
Second. Moving properly second, that we allow our historical societies to proceed with Constantine Development group to produce the preliminary, uh, specs for the repair work on the county museum. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? And lastly, we do know there's some additional grants out there. The historical society has asked if they could pursue the grants for the Allendale County, on behalf of Allendale County. And everything will be brought back to us for approval. And I know we will be working with them, uh, on a lateral position, so I will ask council to approve, allowing them to pursue additional grant funding.
In the name of the county?
In the name of the county for the historical museum project. Just need a motion on that. I know it's pretty long motion.
But Chairman, I make a motion that the county allow the historical society to pursue other grants in the name of Allendale County.
Got a motion?
Second.
Moving properly second, and John, thank you for shorting it for me. Any question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Poses? Aye, sir. Okay, I think we're almost there. Walter, anything we missed?
Yeah. If you did, I'm not gonna tell you.
But Chairman, I'm moving to the executive session.
So, I got a motion that we go into the executive session, it's been, been second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. We won't be long.